Hello, everyone.
Do what?
A good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
I'm wondering if we're going to be graded on Robert's rules this afternoon.
I hope not, Ron. When I do.
Oh, no, there he is, right there.
Hello, Mayor.
I don't want anybody to feel inhibited by anything we said last week. I want you to be, I want you to be yourselves. That's what's important to me.
That's the problem is being ourselves.
Spontaneity is a great value in planning. There's John.
How y'all doing?
Welcome.
We'll figure out the missing person from our last meeting.
I wasn't there.
It was Karen, wasn't it you?
No, I was not there.
October? You responded that you would attend in October. I put you down as you were there.
No, I said I would try, but I was in an RV out west and probably would not have internet service.
Yeah, am I on mute or not?
You're live.
Am I live?
Yes, Bob.
Okay.
Yeah, I gotta go.
Thank you. It takes the village.
Wow, did we have Hastings with us last meeting?
Well, this would be October, right? Is that our last meeting?
Yes.
Uh, yes, we did.
Okay.
So we've established the quorum.
Yes.
Okay, good. Thank you.
Was Nina Davidson with you all?
No.
Okay.
I think it would be a good idea, Mr. Chairman, to do a roll call just going forward. Okay. Who are we missing so far?
Here.
Jim Hastings. Yeah, he's just, he just rolled up.
Okay, I'm right here. Yeah.
All right. Let's see, it's. Oh, it's late. It's two minutes after four, so we'll just get started for sure. While we have a roll call, I think that's a good way to start off. The January 2021 first meeting of the year of the Municipal Planning Commission for the City of Belmeade. So let's have a roll call. Steve Horrell, Chair, and unmute if you would, and then mute back if you would after you report in, please.
Jim Hastings here.
Jim Hunt here.
Bob.
Bob Weagle here.
Karen Rich here.
John.
John Easton's here.
Okay. Michael.
Gaven Duke.
Scott Kendall's here.
Okay. So anybody else?
Bart Ashley.
Very good. Thank you. Anybody else?
Doesn't mean Nina. Nana not here.
Not so far. So are we ready to start? All right, first order of business would be the minutes from 10/20/2020. I love those numbers, 10/20/2020. We got it all straightened out as far as the participants at the time, so we did have a quorum, so the minutes are effective. Hopefully people have read them over, and I'm looking for a motion to approve the minutes.
John Easton motions to approve the minutes.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Easton. Do I have a second?
Bob Weagle, motion, second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Uh, not opposed. All right, Lyle, there you are. You're up. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The application of Thomas Chapman, 300 Jackson Boulevard to combine lots number three and one unnamed lot, which is the same property, into one lot recognized by the City of Belmeade. I'm going to share my screen. And this is the typical combo of lots we've had in the past. I believe they're going to be doing a addition on this home. It's been approved, and they need to combine this in order to pull their building permit. Any particular issues related to this? No, sir. Okay. I need a motion in order to get started, if I could.
I saw a move. This is Jim.
All right, motion's been made. Let's see, do we go to discussion next, or we get a second?
One Eastern seconds.
All right, John Easton seconds. Okay, now we're open for discussion.
Which way is the, which way is the extension going to go?
It's going to go slightly to the left and then back.
Okay.
This, this lot actually slopes heavily from right to left, especially once you get beyond the driveway. So they went to the Board of Zoning Appeal to get approval to do an addition to the rear, but they're not encroaching any closer on the neighbor, but I cannot issue a permit until these two lots are combined.
But John Easton moves that we combine the lots.
Motion been made to combine the lots. Do I have a second?
Bob Weagle, I second.
Do we have anybody from the public present at this Zoom meeting relative to this particular piece of property? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
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 Anyone opposed? And it passes unanimously. Thank you. Wow.
Mr. Chairman, interrupt this, Larry Wick.
Please, Larry.
I sent a note to Lyle earlier. I was going to need to recuse myself from this next item that's coming up on the agenda.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, wow. All right, the next item under new business is the application of Alex Palmer, 533 Belmeade Boulevard to subdivide 533 Belmeade Boulevard into two separate lots. Existing lot is 102,200 square feet. Lot number one should be 50,130 square feet. Lot number two to be 52,070 square feet. And I will share my screen here shortly. Uh, Ron, if you'll call out what you're wanting to look at, I'll pull that up.
Uh, let's start with the, just the plat document first, Lyle. It should be your, there you go. You should be able to pan down and find other screens in that. I just want to be. Okay, yeah. Yeah, perfect. First, thank you, Board members and Mr. Chair, for hearing our presentation this afternoon. I'm joined by Mr. Palmer and his assistant, Jenna Dupre. So if we have any questions for the applicant, they are with me. They won't be on screen because we're just sharing my computer, but they are here with me. Mr. Palmer's plan, if the subdivision is approved, would be to construct two high-end custom homes, meeting the standards of style, detail, and character of high-end homes found throughout Belmeade. His design and construction team would consist of the following members. Myself would be acting as architect. Paige Duke would be engaged as the landscape architect. Mark Simmons would be hired as the interior designer, and Will Andrews would be hired as the construction general contractor. In the past 25 years, this team has collaborated on numerous projects throughout Belmeade. I'm confident saying that if approved, the homes would be in harmony with and a compliment to the City of Belmeade. In short, we think these homes would stand the test of time. Should be noted, the city has in place a check and balance with the newly founded Historic Zoning Commission. And these designs would be reviewed and approved thoroughly through this board. So in addition to our team of professionals, the city has a check and balance now in place to ensure any new home meets a certain standard matching other homes throughout the city. Let's dive in and talk about the subdivision being presented. From consultation with Lyle, the proposed subdivision meets the ordinances per the following. Lot size. The property is in Residence B District. Residents B require a minimum lot size of 40,000 square feet. As Lyle mentioned, the property sizes are the top envelope or top lot, which was identified as one, would be 50,130 square feet. And Lot Two would be just subtly smaller at 50,070 square feet. So lots of equal size and dimension, and we can dive into some dimensioning as we move forward. Further, per the ordinance, each lot or site meets the requirement of a front lot line of at least 125 feet. Lot ones with along Belmeade Boulevard is 191 feet and some change. Lot Two's line length along Belmeade Boulevard is approximately the same. If you zoom in on Lot Two, Lyle, you'll see it's 162 feet until it meets the radius. But just in width terms, that lot is approximately 191 feet as well as it faces Belmeade Boulevard. In addition, the lot meets the requirement along Leake Avenue, and its length is 254 feet plus half of the radius at the corner where Leake meets Belmeade Boulevard. So from our estimations and our calculations in full compliance with the minimum lot line widths and scale. Building envelope. Building envelopes proposed allow for our intent to have each of the residences face Belmeade Boulevard. This pattern is consistent with most homes along Belmeade Boulevard, and we think this would maintain a pattern of consistency and an expected pattern of homes facing the Boulevard. In short, I think this would present the homes in the most favorable orientation. Also important to note, both of the proposed building envelopes adhere to the ordinance standard of 50% in width. I can dive into that in more detail as we may have questions, but in short, city ordinances require the building envelope to equal half of the lot width. And both of these envelopes adhere to that guideline. This, this ordinance then allows for a home on each of these sites to be approximately 95 feet in width. Again, scale and character of these homes, we think, would be a complement and in harmony to the scale, mass, and proportion of other homes along Belmeade Boulevard. Through consultation with Lyle and the corner lot ordinance, we are asking for the commission to establish the billing envelopes as shown. I want to note on the corner lot, which I'll refer to as the lot along Leake and Belmeade Boulevard, Lot Two, we intentionally made the Leake side of this property the largest setback, which is 30% of the lot width. This nets the most green space along Leake, and buffers Leake with its largest setback. My understanding from Lyle in review of the corner lot ordinance was to ensure corner lots were not penalized by having to implement two front setbacks, netting or resulting in an unusually small building envelope or an unbuildable envelope. Our proposed setbacks along Leake and proposed buffering, I think, meets the intent of the corner lot ordinance. While you might zoom down and show my diagram with the buffering landscaping. So this orientation is rotated 90 degrees, if you will, but our proposed submission would include buffering in the lower right corner of Lot Two that would help buffer and shield the new residents as you come up Leake towards Belmeade Boulevard. And then we continue buffering along the side of the building envelope. The space that I'm showing in between the buffering would be an anticipated entry point if we pulled the driveway in that side. But full intent to include buffering along that Leake Avenue, similar to Lyle, if you'll pan down to C1-3, that one, across the street, a Leake or the corner lot of Leake, that is the south edge of this, that house has significant buffering along the right of way along Leake, so we would be complementing and be similar to that buffering. Lot shape in harmony. Wow, let's pan out and go down one more document. Yes, there. Lots along this particular section of the Boulevard vary in width, depth, and size. Our proposed lot width and depth, I feel, is in harmony with this section of Belmeade Boulevard. In short, these two lots would not be the smallest, and they need not come close to being the narrowest. The narrowest that we find in our immediacy are the two properties that bookend each end of our proposed subdivision. If you, to the left of our site, there is the apartment complex, and then the residence to that, quite narrow, quite long. Don't adhere to the 50% setback rule. The same exists on the two residences or the two lots to the south or to the right of our property. You can see that their widths and depth are not in congruency with, with the scale and size of our properties. In fact, the, the properties to the right at the corner of Leake and Belmeade Boulevard of our property don't adhere to the minimum lot size rule that exists today. In summary, I think the lots meet the minimum requirements of size, square footage, exceeding the 40,000 square feet each by over 10,000 square feet. They exceed the minimum lot line widths of 125 feet by close to 70 feet or more. The two lots, I think, maintain the harmony and scale of the properties along Belmeade Boulevard. And the design team and construction team would ensure the residences would be well-designed and reflect the high-end quality that Belmeade is known for. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Ron, this is Bob Weagle.
Yes, sir.
Uh, my question is this, uh, to the left of your properties, I guess it's the left of Property One. Don't those properties, uh, do, do, don't your properties exceed out towards Belmeade Boulevard further than those two properties to the left?
Power to the building envelopes or the property itself?
I see that your red line goes, you know, across above, further out towards Belmeade Boulevard than, uh, than those two properties.
Yes, we exceed, the existing residence that's there today
Yeah.
is 100 feet from the property line. So the existing residence that there, that is there today does exceed those two to our left. The red dash line that I'm showing, Mr. Weagle, is showing a datum line from the two to the right of our property, all the way down to the one on my far left, showing a consistency of a datum line there. That's correct.
In order, and Bob, just a second, in order for there to be discussion and make sure we're following rules correctly, uh, do we need a motion on the floor so that we can get this thing discussed? Mr. Chairman, if I may jump in here, I think Please. you're still getting information from the applicant, and you may want to hear from folks who want to be heard, so I would wait to get a motion. Thank you. Thank you, Doug. We want to follow the rules. Let me say that this, this commission has followed the rules, and we just, we just not attending a little bit maybe, so. Good, good. Other questions for Mr. Harris?
I have a question, maybe for Gavin. Gaven is the, I'm just glad to see there's no landscaping at the corner of Leake and Belmeade Boulevard because of the visibility that, that would normally be blocked if it was up there, so I would, thanks for taking that into consideration.
And I would add that our submission to the Historic Zoning Commission will include a landscape plan. So there will be, in addition to what we're showing here, there will be a overall site plan that shows all intended landscaping. But yes, Mr. Mayor, I understand the issue with blocking of Leake as you pull through it. I think another thing to add about the building envelopes is that the residences with the proposed front setbacks would not block that view even with cars queued back from Belmeade Boulevard, if that makes sense.
Yep. Ron, is there, is there right now a proposal or thought about how cars would enter the property, each property?
Well, Lot One, which would be to the left of this drawing that's up today, we would be entering from Belmeade Boulevard. Not quite sure which side yet. We anticipate that we would put the garage on Lot One to the left of this. In other words, it would be oriented towards the apartment, most likely. And the most green space between the two structures is our goal, even though we're giving the largest setback on the right side of Leake Avenue. On Lot Two, our plan would also to be enter, entering off of Belmeade Boulevard. We haven't sketched much, but there's a, there's a plant, a potential plan that you could enter off of Leake to get to a garage structure. And that's the goal of the buffering, is to preclude any views into that garage if it does occur on that Leake side.
Thank you.
Other questions?
I have a question. So the, it's Karen Rich. Uh, the Lot Two, if you have, so are you saying that you might have a garage with the doors facing Leake?
It's allowed by ordinance because of it's a two lot, two frontage lot. It's allowed by ordinance. If they did face Leake, they would be buffered, recognizing, uh, again, having dove into designs, but our broad interest would be to present the home in its best capacity, both from Leake and Belmeade Boulevard. So I'm not sure we would be interested in facing doors to Leake.
We're not, we're not considering that today. You were just concerned the lot itself being subdivided, right?
That's correct.
Okay.
The Historic Zoning Commission would have oversight to that aspect of the project.
This is Jim. Uh, I only with three doors down, and I, I would hope that the garage would not, would not face Leake. I would hope it would either be in the back of what we're calling Lot Number Two or on the other side. However, on the other side doesn't give you enough room, I don't think. So I would prefer it been a neighbor, that it faced the back, not, not Leake.
You, you can load your guns for the VZA and historic zoning when that happens.
Yeah. Other questions?
I'm glad to see improvement on this piece of property.
Yeah. I think it looks good, Ron.
Is there anything that, other than us approving the the division of the property, are there any other unusual things that would keep this from just sort of being rubber stamp?
Wow. I'm, I'm not aware of any, no. I've worked on this, done research on this for a while. This is, it's a good lot. It, it checks all the boxes. Uh, any, any hesitation about garage doors or anything like that would really need to be addressed at the Board of Zoning Appeal or Historic Zoning. Do we have anybody from the public present?
Yes. Yes, you do.
Okay. Would you identify yourself and where you live?
We are Bart and Laurie Ashley. And we, we have a residence. We live directly across the street at 540 Belmeade Boulevard.
Okay. Do you have any questions?
Well, I, I, well, I don't know if we have any questions. I understand what the proposal is, but I guess our comment is, you know, we moved into the, when we, we weren't, we weren't aware that anybody was considering subdividing that lot. And we moved into it recently, and I guess just, it was always our understanding by looking at the, I guess, your website, and when we looked at Belmeade Together, the city's website, other links to the website, and even talking to representatives, that we, the intent was to keep the original character and charm of the community. And I think you, the quote in there is to continue the, the green rolling lawns and the park-like surroundings. And as I looked further, you know, we see that tearing down and subdividing lots and putting, putting multiple homes on them is probably not consistent with those goals. So we were very surprised to see this, and I, I guess maybe we just weren't aware of it, that, that these kind of things were happening, but with, this is right in our front yard, so what you've done now is put two large homes right on our front porch. So we're not, we would not be for this subdivision.
Thank you for your thoughts. Any other comments from the public?
This is I would like, I would like to add to that. This is Laurie Ashley. In the, the community survey that recently went out, and we saw the results from that, and, and a large portion of the community is concerned with lots being subdivided in Belmeade, and we do appreciate the large lots and, and maintaining the look of Belmeade, especially on the Boulevard. So I'm, I'm quite concerned with this. I think this is not necessarily in keeping with what your public survey results requested.
Thank you very much.
Let me ask Steve, assuming that this is all proper with all of the guidance and, I don't know, the laws in Belmeade, we don't really have the right to turn this down, do we?
You're correct.
So I think any, any issues about, you know, keeping the lots bigger and all of that would have to be something to bring up before the commission, would it not, to change the bylaws or something?
The next stopgap on this the next stopgap on this would be the Historic Commission, correct? Wow?
Yes.
Okay.
Got to give permission, air of the house.
But, but as far as where we are, John Eason, you're exactly right. Uh, this has been presented to us. Uh, Lyle has looked at it, worked on it for a long time. And I don't see where we can object to the actual subdivision taking place. It, otherwise, I don't know, I'm not sure what else to do.
Well, I will move that we accept it as drawn and explained. And I just wanted the people that are concerned, and I understand concerns about looks and all that, to know that that's not our job. Um, we're, we're just to look at this and make sure that it complies with, um, the laws as written. Um, but that there are other steps along the way that they can take their concerns to. Does that make sense?
Okay, well, can I, 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 can I ask another question? This is Bart Ashley again.
Go ahead, Bart.
I, I guess I'm, let me make sure I understand. So if I have a tract of land and it's made up multiple lots and, uh, they're not built on, then we can always get a permit to build on those lots. Is that right?
No, not necessarily. Wow, would you address that, please?
Sure. If you have a house on a large parcel of land, you would have to, uh, go to the Historic Zoning, get permission to tear it down. In this case, I feel like personally, they're probably not going to have any trouble getting that done. This is not typically a noteworthy home. You've got to have 40,000 square feet to develop a lot. Um, if you have an existing home on a large tract and you try to subdivide and you only have 79,000 square feet total, and you tried to subdivide, you could not do that. You might be able to have a lot that was 40,000 plus, but the home that currently is on the other lot would be out of compliance. So you've got to have 80,000 plus to create two lots. You've also got to have road frontage or the front lot line of at least 125 feet, as is stated in the subdivision ordinance. You also need to have access to the street of no less than 50 feet. So there are plenty of checks and balances in, in doing this. And, and like was mentioned earlier, this is the first stop. They may have to go to two more. We definitely know they have to go to Historic Zoning, and they may have to go to Board of Zoning Appeal as well.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, you might, uh,
We have a motion.
Mister, I know, Mr. Eason's motion is notwithstanding. It looked like you had another citizen who wanted to be heard just from flashing on my screen. I could be wrong about that, but I didn't, I didn't want to preclude that.
Thank, thank you, Doug. This is Haley Dale. Mr. Chairman, if I could just ask a quick question. Um, I live at 601 Inquirer, so I'm on the corner of Leek and Inquirer. I am wondering if, I cannot tell from these plans if there is a, uh, is it the job of this board to decide the addresses? Like, will these homes? I know you said they would face Belme Boulevard, but I'm curious, and I was having some connectivity issues, so I may, I may have missed it. But is there an intended driveway or drive access from Leek that has been established yet, or will that happen later?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, it's Ron Ferris. I'm happy to answer that question.
Please.
Um, the addresses of both properties, Haley, would be Belme Boulevard. Um, there is not a drive entry point determined for any of the properties that would take place as we move through the Historic Zoning Commission with our, um, with our plans and elevations. But the address themselves would both be Belme Boulevard addresses.
Okay, great, and thank you. And then, Mr. Chairman, I've got one more question, and it, and it may, um, does anyone, who's, who determines drive access from a street if it is not existing? Is that the, it, the, and this may be a question for Lyle or Doug. I mean, my time on the zoning board, I never saw a, we didn't approve a new driveway entrance. I don't know who, who does that go to?
That is determined, uh, really by the owner. Uh, they would come in and pay a driveway cut permit with the Director of Public Works, Larry Smith, but other than
Okay.
where the driveway goes, that is never an issue. Now, I will say, when it get on a corner such as Leek and Belme, you cannot put that driveway
You're cutting out.
the corner.
Say that again, Lyle. You cannot put that driveway where?
When you get to a corner like Leek and Belme, you cannot put the driveway too close to that corner. It's got to be far enough away. So that, that would come into play. But other than that, that's the only stipulation.
It with, with Larry, uh, at Public Works and then, okay, that was my question. Thank you all.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Mr. Chairman and Haley, that can be found within the corner lot ordinance. Uh, I believe it's 35 feet from the intersection. No driveway cuts can be, uh, installed.
Thank you.
Any other public, uh, comments?
Steve, my, my, my only comment would be that, and this is in, uh, response to the Ashley's comments, which I do appreciate. But I believe with the quality of the, of the architecture that Ron Ferris has produced in Belme would be a lot, a lot better than looking at that particular house that is there now. It's looking at two beautiful homes, uh, saving enough space there to have green space on either side of all the houses. I, I'm, I would be in favor of how this thing will come through the Historic Zoning and the Board of Zoning Appeals, even though that's not what we're voting on.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We do have
Mr. Chairman, uh, this is Gaven. Uh, I've been named as a team member. I probably should remove myself from the vote, and I think we still have a quorum.
Okay, thank you, Gaven. We do have a motion on the floor from Mr. Eason. Uh, I'm looking for a second.
I'll second. Jim Hunt.
Jim Hunt. Uh, any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Let's get a roll call.
Okay, let's get a roll call.
Roll call.
Good, in alphabetical order.
Take us back, take us back to the ga- hey, uh, Lyle, take us back to gallery if you would.
All right.
And I'll call on individual, okay. Mr. Mayor first?
I'd rate, I vote in favor.
Okay. Um, Larry is, is not going to vote. Um, Karen?
Uh, I'm in favor.
Okay, Bob?
Aye.
Um, Gavin said he can't vote. Mr. Hastings?
Yes, I'm in favor.
Mr. Eason?
I vote aye.
Um, who else is out there?
Yeah, this is Scott Kendall. I'm in favor.
Okay, anyone else? Hearing none, it passes unanimously.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Board members.
Thank you, Ron. Excellent. Please. Uh, Allo, what other matters are before the board?
I believe that is all, Mr. Chairman.
Do you want me to come by tomorrow to sign both of these?
Yes, please. At your leisure.
I will do that.
Uh, make, make sure on those minutes that too, that, that we approved, that we put, uh, this meeting was held by, by Zoom conference.
Please.
I think Edie's gonna do that, I think.
Presentation, Ron.
Any other business before our commission? Hearing none, motion to adjourn? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Do we do okay, Doug?
He's, he's
You're on mute.
There should be a, I think there should be a monthly Robert Truel's Award. We'll, we'll work on that.
Thank you.
I, I agree. That was, that was, that wins the award. Good job.
We'll have a plaque with your name on it, uh, Steve.
Thank you for all, for joining in today.
Thanks.
Take your time. Thank you.